Good evening, everyone. We will call the December 5 City Council meeting to order. First order of business is roll call on the termination of the quorum. Charlene?
Nordstrom.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Sasso.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next door of business is executive session. And Tamara, if you could state the reason?
Yes, I'd like to ask for executive session under subsection one of SDCL 125.2 for discussing qualifications and performance of public officers or employees, and under subsection three to consult with legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters.
Do we have a motion?
Motion by Brown, second, and by Doyle to go into executive session per the reasons listed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session. And we'll resume at seven o'clock.
We have a motion to come out of executive session. Motion by Peterson, second by Wright to come out of executive session. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll be taking action on two items and the third item will need to have a brief executive session at the end of the meeting to finish that one. Tamara?
Yes. I believe I've given him the...
Alderman Davis has him. Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming out of executive session, there are two motions immediately. One is, the first one, is to direct staff to reject the settlement offer for a step three grievance as proposed by Mike Close. That would be the motion.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Dave.
Second one is to move to authorize the proposed settlement to the IAFF on terms and conditions outlined in executive session. That would be the motion.
Motion by Davis, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Dave.
Second one is to move to authorize the proposed settlement to the IAFF on terms and conditions outlined in executive session. That would be the motion.
Motion by Davis, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And now we'll move to our invocation. Is our pastor here tonight? Jerry Wright, would you step in for us tonight? Pastor Dale, would you... Okay. Everyone please rise.
Good evening and Merry Christmas to all of you. Let's pray. Father, we are grateful for this another day of life, but we understand that this day of life is not over. There's much work yet to be done here this evening. We are grateful for each person here tonight, from the mayor to our city council members, to the staff, to the audience gathered here, and those who watch by cable. Would ask your Father your blessings. We are grateful for this time of year that brings us the slogan "Peace on Earth, Goodwill to Men." We would pray that for our very lives and for our country, for our great state, for our community. We pray peace on earth. We pray for those who serve our military, both at home and abroad. Father, protect them, keep them safe, give them wisdom as they serve our great country. We pray for their family members back home, their protection. Father, we pray for goodwill on earth. We are grateful that we live in a community that understands goodwill. We live in a community that understands the gift of giving. At this time of year, Lord, we would ask now, Lord, tonight, that you walk with us through this meeting, that we would remember the reason for this season, for it is in the name of the One who is the same yesterday, today, and forever, Jesus the Christ, that we pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Dale. And now comes the time to adopt the agenda. We do have one item so far to add to the agenda, and that would be item 121A, which would be an executive session. Any additional items? Any additional items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Brown, second by Peterson. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to approve the minutes and the correction as noted. Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And now we have the citizen of the month, and if the Ward Three Alderman could join me down front. to our community. We are pleased to present this award to Jeanette Keck of Rapid City. Jeanette has resided in Rapid City since 1992. She is a retired schoolteacher with the Rapid City School System. She's been married to her husband Bill for 32 years, and they have two sons and one daughter. Jeanette has been involved in numerous organizations throughout the city, including Big Sisters, Food Share, Cosmopolitans, and Canyon Lake United Methodist Church. She has been nominated by Ward Three Alderman Jerry Wright and Dave Davis because of her service to the Chapel Valley community. Jeanette has put in countless hours and has shown exceptional leadership in developing an emergency plan for the residents and emergency service personnel. Emergency planning contributes to the safety and well-being of the community and consists of designing, implementing, and executing a safe and organized procedure for dealing with any type of natural direct disaster that would affect the neighborhood. Alderman Wright.
Executive proclamation, Rapid City, South Dakota, Office of the Mayor. Whereas, the city Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service. Whereas, the December Citizen of the Month is awarded to Jeanette Keck of Rapid City. Jeanette is a retired schoolteacher with the Rapid City School System. Whereas, Jeanette has been involved in numerous city organizations, including Big Sister, Food Share, Cosmopolitans, and Canyon Lake United Methodist Church. Whereas, Jeanette has put in countless hours and exceptional leadership in developing an emergency plan for the residents of Chapel Valley. Whereas, this plan has been recognized by the city council as an ongoing program to assist the residents and emergency service personnel alike in planning, implementing, and executing a safe and organized procedure for dealing with any type of natural disaster that would affect the neighborhood. Now therefore, we, Alderman Jerry Wright, Alderman Dave Davis of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor, do hereby proclaim Jeanette Keck as the December 2011 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition of her innovation and leadership and the many contributions she has made to our community.
For those of you that may not be aware of just what this means and what Jeanette has done, if you remember a year or so ago, there was quite a bit of controversy about the safety issues in Chapel Valley. There are 540-some homes that are basically landlocked with one way in and out. There were a lot of different options thrown out, many of them really not very palatable for the citizenry. Rather than simply turning her back on an issue, Jeanette approached this in a very positive way, gathered those citizens together, and put together with their help, and there are many of them in the room tonight that I see, a plan that the emergency management, whether it be police or fire, we've had other organizations around the community that have been involved, have put together a plan that not just satisfies a council today, but on an ongoing basis provides a safe exit in the event of an emergency for those 540 residents. I'm very proud to have Jeanette as a Citizen of the Month and a Citizen of Ward Three. Thank you, Jeanette.
And I ask to be able to say just a few words. I just have a few thank yous. I'd like to say thank you to this council, and a lot of them have worked very hard on helping us to try to keep our neighborhoods safe and preserve the quality of life that we have. And so I thank them for having coffee with me and just listening, and especially Dave Davis, who I called on many occasions, and he talked at length to me and kind of got me headed down the right path again, so thank you for that, Dave. And I also wanted to thank Dick Tepper, who is in the audience, and he was very instrumental in getting this passed also, and my husband, of course, who put up with me and listened to a lot of what was going on. So, thank you very much, and this is quite an honor. Thank you.
And Chief Allender? When I first saw your name, I thought it was Ragnoni a long time ago. It's Ragno, and we want to take a moment to thank Lieutenant Peter Ragno for his 20 years of distinguished service to the city of Rapid City and the Rapid City Police Department. Chief Allender.
Thank you, Mayor. Pete Ragno came to us in 1991. He was a brand-new shiny, smaller patrol officer. Came from Michigan. And graduated from Fair State University, and also USD. Pete has been patrol officer, he's promoted to sergeant. He's also detective. He's done an outstanding job for us. One thing specifically lately that he's done has been his work with the cadet program or the explorer program related to the Boy Scouts program, where we have teenage high school students usually who are interested in law enforcement, and they get into the explorer program, and they're mentored by Pete and put into line by him. And Pete has organized statewide law enforcement cadet challenge, which has brought explorer groups from all over the state together in a competition where they compete on various levels, and it's been a very good deal for the city. So, Pete was promoted to lieutenant about a year ago this month, and I'd like to congratulate him for 20 years.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mayor. I just want to say it's been an honor to serve in this great community, and I hope to have a few more good years left. Thank you.
Ron, we'd like to take a moment tonight to acknowledge your 20 years of distinguished service to the city and the Rapid City Police Department. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mayor. Ron Estes came to us also in 1991 and came from the Air Force, where he retired as a major. And he's a meteorologist, so if you don't like the weather tonight, get Ron on the way out, and he has something to do with it. So, we hired Ron in 1991 as a crime analyst. We'd never had the position before, and Ron came in, and in 1991, really, Ron taught us about computers. So, even though his job classification has been crime analyst for the last 20 years, he's been our stand-in IT guy. He's helped with all kinds of troubleshooting issues with computers, writing programs, and so on. We've also had him do a stint as the records manager and also the accreditation manager during that time, and he's settled back into crime analysis now and done a great job for us for 20 years, so thank you, Ron.
I just want to thank you, Chief, and Mr. Mayor, and for the opportunity that I've had these past 20 years to serve our department and the men and women that are serving there and serving our community. It's been a great pleasure for me, and I've had a lot of fun doing it these past 20 years. My only hope is that the next 20 years go a little bit slower than these past 20, but I'd like to also thank my wife Bonnie for all her support during these past 20 years as well. Thank you, sweetheart, and thank you, everyone. Mr. Mayor? Appreciate it.[1792.51]
on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue that is not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We do not have any general speaker request forms. If I missed anyone, please let me know. If not, we'll move on to our non-public hearing items. Let's have a motion to open public comment on items two through 43. Motion by Roberts and a second by Sasso to open public comment on items two through 43. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we have a speaker request form for item 39 from Jean Claire Hamblin. Come forward and identify yourself for the record. This is regarding, item number 39 regarding the sign request for Rapid City Area Schools.
Right. My name's Jean Claire Hamblin. I'm the Community School Coordinator at General Beetle Community School, which serves all of the North Rapid community. And I just came primarily to be available to answer any questions that might arise here. A couple of things that had come up since the article was in the paper was concern about the funding of that sign, and we did have a clarification in the paper and a change to the online article to indicate that there are no school district funds being used to purchase this message board. And as I am hopeful that you will have some better reins on the type of signs all around our community, I want you to know that I was really mindful in terms of trying to get the most discreet and smallest sign that we could have so that we can have better utilization of the services that we have to offer all of the citizens of our community that take place at General Beetle. So, we've tried very hard to get something that is enough, but not too much. So, thank you. And I'll be here for any questions if anybody has them. Thanks.
Thank you. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for items two through 43. Can we have a motion to close public comment?
Second.
Motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on the consent items, items two through 42. Are there any items that council members or staff would like to remove for separate consideration? Pauline Sumption, our finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need number 30 pulled, please.
Okay, item 30. Jerry Wright. Item 20, Gary Brown.
Number eight.
Number eight. So, so far, we have eight, 20, and 30. Anything else? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve items two through 43 with the exceptions of eight, 20, and 30? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, and our Public Works Vice Chair, Jerry Wright, could you read this into the agenda for us?
Item number eight is Public Works PW 112911-02. Approved change order number 1F to Hills Materials Company for Jackson Boulevard Greenway Track Utilities, project number SSW 11-1959, CIP number 50856 for a decrease of 4796555. I recommend approval.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? And Gary Brown, you'll be abstaining?
Yes, I will. I have a brother-in-law that works for Hills Material.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries with one abstention from Gary Brown. And item number 20.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to ask our Public Works Director to add additional information to that program that we had on Tuesday. Thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, there was some clarification I wanted to give tonight. When I gave my report last week, I was waiting for a phone call back from the Department of Transportation just to verify some of the information, and specifically was in regard to maintenance of the roadway up to the rail lines. And just to clarify that, the city is responsible for all the road maintenance up to the rail lines themselves. The rail lines and the concrete panels that lie directly under those rail lines are the responsibility of the railroads. And just so you guys know, we'll be going out and inspecting those and putting a plan together on a few of those that are pretty rough, some short-term and longer-term plans, so hopefully we can alleviate some of the roughness on those.
For clarification, then, the roadway across the ties and between the rails, between the road approaches, is our responsibility or the railroad's responsibility? It's ours, isn't it?
It is our responsibility. The only thing that the railroad maintains is-
Is the ties, the ballast, and the rail.
That's correct. Those small concrete-
And we take care of the panels, plank. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'm done.
Could we have a motion on this item?
I just acknowledge the report, the update.
Motion by Wright and a second by Roberts to acknowledge the report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll go to item 30, and then we're going to need to reconsider consent so that we can pull item 21 and change it from 30% to 35%. So, let's go to item number 30, and then we'll come back. Alderman Mason, could you read item number 30 for us into the record?
Yes. Item 30 is to approve resolution number 2011-TAC 156 Alpha fixing time and place for hearing on assessment role for cleanup of miscellaneous property, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Peterson, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually need to pull number nine for Victor and Ruth Huber. They have made payment, so they will not need to be assessed.
And that's the intent of the motion maker?
Yes.
Okay, and it's okay with the second here? Okay, everyone understands the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can we have a motion to reconsider consent, please? Motion by Davis, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Can we have a motion to approve consent with the exception of 21? Motion by Sasso, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number 21, Gary Brown, can you read this to the record for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 21 is authorizing lowering the percentage of work that the general contractor must perform from 50% to 35% for the water reclamation facility pre-treatment improvements, construction, and installation project. Project number WRF 111-1928, CIP number 50855. I move to approve.
Motion by Brown and second by Nordstrom for approval, and note that that is from 50% to 35%. The agendas is 30%, but what's being approved is to 35%. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now go to item 43, which is a continuation item to December 19. We have a motion to continue. Motion by Roberts, second by Mason. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on the non-consent portion of the calendar, items 44 through 104. Can we have a motion to open public comment? Motion by Mason, second by Sasso to open public comment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have one speaker request form, and this is from Josh Christensen on item 49. If you could state your name for the record, Josh, and the organization that you represent, and the floor is yours. This is regarding item 49.
Good evening. My name's Josh Christensen. I'm with Neighbor Works Dakota Home Resources. And I just wanted to take the time tonight to publicly thank Rapid City staff and you guys as council for working with us to come up with an agreement for the Lemon Avenue exchange, so we can exchange the garden for the 820 Lemon Avenue, which is a blighted structure there. I know we've worked hard to come up with an agreement so we can move forward with the efforts of revitalization of Lemon Avenue. I also wanted to thank, publicly thank, the Rapid City Police Department for their efforts of two of their finest, Ron Treville and Jim Hanson, for what they've done on Lemon Avenue and the efforts that they've put into making this revitalization and making the impact that it's been on Lemon Avenue. Without their efforts, we probably wouldn't have had the successes that we have had so far with the community garden and the crime reduction. But I hope the council continues to support our exchange and approves the resolution as presented tonight. With that being said, my only concern is that the time that it will take to sell the structure that is on 820 Lemon Avenue and the time that it will take to reclaim the land. We've got great momentum going on in Lemon Avenue. There's been lots of support by the residents. They're moving forward, and we just want to see that continue. We hope to have your support. So, this will make another direct impact to Lemon Avenue, and again, just want to thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Seeing no further speaker request forms for items 44 through 104, can we have a motion to close public comment? Motion by Mason, second by Brown. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 44, Jordan?
Thank you. Item 44 is first reading of ordinance number 5775, an ordinance adding colleges and universities of conditional use in the medium-density residential zoning district by amendment section 17.12.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code with an amendment to include private colleges and universities, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 45.
Item 45 is first reading ordinance number 5773 supplemental appropriation number 7 for 2011 with the request that the mayor authorize staff to provide a preliminary profit and loss statement for the golf course restaurant to the city council at the December 5, 2011 meeting, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 46, Jordan?
Item 46, first reading ordinance number 5774, an ordinance repealing chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to wards and precincts and adopting a new revised chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? We'll go to Dave Davis. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion or an amendment to the motion, I guess it would be more appropriate, to approve the committee's proposed map number two.
Okay, we have a motion by Davis and a second by Peterson. This is a substitute motion to approve map number two. Pauline, would you be willing to pull the map up for us? Do you have it available?
This would be the new map that was approved by the redistricting committee on Friday, I believe it was. And the only difference that we have on this map compared to the first map is between wards three and five. The main areas are right in there, and then also, whoops, that doesn't write where you actually have the pen. There, and then there. So, that way, the natural boundary would be the Skyline Drive area and, I believe, Jackson Boulevard. No, not in that. I'm sorry? Cottonwood? Okay. I'm also meeting with the auditor's office and the school district this week, hopefully, to look at precincts, but this is what we have established for the wards.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. This is a substitute motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Pauline. Item number 47. Alderman Mason?
Item 47 is a request by Renner and Associates LLC for Susan Link for a preliminary plat for the area described as located at 2727 and 2735 Jenny Gulch Road, and I will yield the floor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Motion by Sasso, and do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Roberts. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 48, Jordan?
Item 48 is to request the mayor to authorize staff to assess whether or not the implementation of roofing permits has served its purpose and bring back a report to the December 14, 2011 Legal and Finance Committee meeting, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 49, Jordan?
49 is to approve resolution number 2011-TAC 109 of intent to enter into real estate exchange agreement with Neighborhood Housing Services, the Black Hills Incorporated, DBA Neighborhood Works, Dakota Home Resources pursuant to South Dakota Codeified Law 92734.1. By proceeding with staff recommended option number four to auction the existing structure with the stipulation it be removed from the city limits, demolish the existing foundation, reclaim the land, and then proceed with a land exchange with Neighborhood Works with the stipulation that once the land exchange has been accomplished, Neighborhood Works would agree to take back the deeds to the community garden as a gratuitous transfer of real property to a nonprofit corporation under South Dakota Codeified Law 652 Neighborhood Works could then proceed with building affordable housing on the lot at 820 Lemon Avenue. Any permit to construct a new structure would require to be built out of the floodplain pursuant to code requirements, and I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mason and a second by Robertson. You were challenged this morning to do it in one breath, and you did it in two, so I'm very impressed. Any discussion? We'll go to John Roberts. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask you a question, Josh? I have been doing a little bit of research on this property. Would Neighborhood Works still be interested in the structure itself?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to make a, let's see, how am I going to do this? Oh, I can't do it anyway.
If nobody else would like to speak, you can go ahead and make a motion. I don't have any other lights, so go ahead and offer your motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to, first of all, let me explain myself. No, I can't? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to strike everything from, by proceeding with staff recommendation number four, to auction the existing structure with the stipulation it would be removed from the city limits, demolish the existing foundation, reclaim the land, period. I would just like Neighborhood Works to have the existing structure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. This is, this is an amendment.
It's an amendment.
Okay, this is an amendment. So, this is an amendment offered by Robertson, seconded by Laurenti, and tell me one more time where this-
Strike the, by proceeding with staff recommendations, option number four, to auction the existing structure with the stipulation it be removed from the city limits, demolish the existing foundation, reclaim the land, and then just to proceed with the land exchange with Neighborhood Works.
Okay. Does everyone understand the motion? Let's make sure everyone understands the amendment before we take any more lights. Does everyone understand the amendment? Okay. Okay, we'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to recommend that we amend that a little bit further, and that is, this is in the floodway, I understand, and the basement and foundation need to be corrected in order to be in compliance. So I don't care if they keep the structure, but let's make it clear that that foundation and footing is removed and it's built in compliance with the floodway ordinance. Can we do that?
Yes.
You'll, you'll accept that as a friendly amendment? Okay, because we don't, we don't have room for any.
But they keep the structure. Yes.
Okay. Charlene, you understand that? You believe so? Okay. Any further discussion? Does everyone understand the amendment? Charlene?
Okay, the way I understand it is that, approve the resolution with the intent to enter real estate agreement with Neighborhood Housing Services of Black Hills pursuant to South Dakota, all that other stuff, and proceed with a land exchange with Neighborhood Works with stipulation that once the land exchange has been accomplished, Neighborhood Works would agree to take back the deed to the community garden as a gratuitous transfer of real property to a nonprofit corporation under South Dakota Codeified Law. Neighborhood Works would, Neighborhood Works could then proceed with building affordable housing on the lot at eight twenty Avenue. Any permit to construct a new, to construct would require foundation to be built in compliance of floodplain requirements.
Is that clear to the motion maker, the seconder, and the friendly amender?
I think so. If it's for the rest of the council.
Okay. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask Allison Marsland a question, please?
Please.
Thank you. I'm sorry to put you on the spot once again on this issue, especially in light of the fact that Legal and Finance has already spent multiple hours on this in addition to what staff has. Could you please summarize for us why option number four was, in staff's opinion, the best option, why we may not want to proceed with the amendment on the floor?
In my meetings with Brad Solan, and he can actually speak to the structural issues better than I can, so I apologize for that, but I have been out to the site and had many discussions with Brad Solan about the state of that structure. It's my understanding the foundation is cracked, the, the structure itself is six inches below what the floodplain would be, so would a flood, should a flood ensue at this point in time, not only would the basement be flooded, but six inches of the ground floor level would be flooded as well. The outside of the structure is clearly in a state of blight. There's graffiti, there's ratted-out eaves. As I didn't see the inside of the structure, I can't speak to that, but there is a staff report from Brad Solan, speaking to the last time he was inside that structure. I think he has serious questions as to how mu, the state of the materials in that house, whether or not there's very much that's actually salvageable to be used. And those issues in combination with the floodplain issues, the fact that the back portion of the lot is much better suited, it's higher up for building a new structure that would be out of the floodplain and alleviate the current issues, those were the reasons that staff recommended that the structure be either auctioned off with the stipulation that it go outside of the city limits or demolished, whatever would be more cost-effective based on what the finance office would determine.
All right, and may I ask a personal question?
Certainly.
You can choose not to answer it if you want to. In light of the fact that the motion on the floor is taking us completely back to square one with this, how do you, how do you feel about that?
You know, I, I got this file when it already had quite a bit of history. I can't speak to how much time staff prior to my taking on the file, how much staff time was put into it. I have put quite a bit of time into it. I've had several meetings with Josh Christensen. I've had several meetings with Brad Solan. The city has quite a history with this piece of property, from what I understand from Brad. And I believe ten years we've owned this and it's been off the tax rolls and there were issues when it was built that created some liability to the city, and that's how it ended up in city hands. And, and so I guess with all of the research I've done into this and, and having been at the site and seen the state of the property, this is really staff's recommendation after a lot of time and effort, and so I, it's, it's not staff's ultimate decision. I mean, it's up to the council, but staff recommendation is what it is, based on a lot of time and effort, and so I'll just leave it at that.
I appreciate your.
Charity, you on the floor?
I, I'm sorry, they were chatting over here. I do appreciate all of the hours that you, you and other staff members have put into this. I think it was vetted well above and beyond what we as a council could ask for, and I'll support your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Sasso?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's pretty much Charity, is sharing similar concerns that where we were at when we had our last discussion on this. And I think, I think everyone is in agreement that this is a great thing for that part of town. There, there's no doubt, but I think when we look at having an older structure there, there's a lot that has to happen. I think the big question is how fast it can happen. I think that's the bigger concern. I think it's best to try to get rid of that house. If Neighbor Works wants to bid on it, I think that, that's great, but, but I think the sooner we get rid of it based on what else might be in there and how much damage there is to that, to that property, it probably, in the long run, would, it sounds like it would be easier to put a new home on a level lot there and build it up. So, thank you.
Jordan Mason?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify the language with the two amendments, just so I'm clear, because if I'm reading this correctly, frankly, this logically doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense. So, we want to proceed with a land exchange with Neighborhood Works with all of the stipulations, then we get to the last line, and any permit to construct a new structure would require the foundation be built out of the floodplain pursuant to code requirements. Is that the current, okay. So we're going to give them the structure, and then if they want to build a structure on top of the existing structure that we're giving them, that has to be moved out of the current floodplain. That's the way it reads. So is the intention to move the current structure out of the floodplain instead, instead of talking about a new structure altogether, do you want to change this to say that you want the existing structure, once we hand it over, require them to physically lift it off the ground and move it out of the floodplain? Is that the intention? Just so I'm clear.
Let's go to our friendly amender, Jerry Wright. Jerry?
I'm going to try and inject a little common sense into this thing. If we're talking about the structure, we're talking about the building that's made of wood above the concrete foundation. Yes, if they can salvage it and bring it up to code, yes. That would be picked up by jacks, moved off to the side, I don't care where, somewhere within compliance of our code and so forth. The old foundation, which has been found at fault, is removed. A new foundation is reconstructed, and it would not only meet the flood code, but it would also meet our structural code for reinforcement and all that kind of stuff. And then the building, if it can be put back on that foundation and constructed and meet code, that's the intent of my amendment. Is that yours, John?
Okay, I just wanted to.
The foundation, the structure we're talking about is the timber above the foundation, and the foundation has to go.
Right. And I guess my, my issue is, is that the way this reads is talking about building a new structure, but we're talking about an existing structure and moving it. And so I guess I would just make the suggestion that if, if we want to talk about the existing structure that we're going to hand over, then let's change that last line to talk about the existing structure and not talk about building a new foundation, but require the stipulation that if they take this, that they physically move it and just specify what we mean. That's all I'm, I'm recommending. And I'll yield the floor.
Let me try and clarify it again in, in what I would call good construction civil engineering terms. The structure in its entirety is the foundation to the roof. The portion that we're talking about them allowed to be salvaged is the timber type structure that is currently, I assume, bolted to the concrete foundation. That is the wood structure, first floor, second floor, or whatever is there. They could, by permit, if done properly, raise that off the existing concrete foundation, destroy, remove the existing current faulty, defunct, rotten, whatever it is, failed concrete foundation that's removed. A new foundation is built under that or in that area that will comply with our code for a concrete foundation and floodway ordinance. That's not a motion, that's a book, almost, I understand. But that's the intent of the, of my motion in support of John.
Sure. I actually, I'd like to ask a quick question, if I may, Mayor, just to clarify this, but just, Mr. Christensen, and if I may, are you willing to pay, is Neighborhood Works willing to pay to physically lift a structure out of the ground and relocate it?
The structure itself may not, it probably won't look anything like it looks now. So if we're going to use what's there, we'll tear whatever we need off or lift it up out of the structure. And we're willing to pay for it, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Sorry. Go free.
One other option is, that Jerry didn't allude to, is they can jack it up and change the foundation, where it has a crawl space under it instead of a basement, and that gets it out of the floodplain. There's a lot of options they can do. When I was checking into this project, looking at people that may want to buy this property at auction, I can, couldn't find anybody that wanted to. People don't, that I talked to, did not want to move this structure. It costs too much money to do. If we did find somebody to move it off, we're still in the position where we have to go in, we have to tear the foundation out, we have to cap the sewer lines before we can even sell the property. We're into it for at least $10,000 of taxpayers' money. This way, Neighborhood Works is willing to take that risk. They're willing to do something with the property, and it doesn't cost the taxpayer a dime. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
We'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Alderman Mason brings up a, a great point in that as we start to alter or amend the motion, we lose some of the essence of it. And it looks like a real simplification, and I will offer this to the friendly amender because he may want to add it to his friendly amendment. If you look at the last sentence, if it read, "Any permit would require the structure to be built out of the floodplain pursuant to code requirements." Now you've eliminated the new, it's whatever they do with it, and the language would be satisfactory, I think, wouldn't it, Allison? If we changed it to "any structure," or "any permit would require the structure to be built out of the floodplain pursuant to code requirements," would that satisfy the, the legal side?
Yes, and that sentence is just fine.
Okay. So I will offer that for clarification to the friendly amender.
Sounds real friendly to me, Dave. I'll take it.
And that's okay with the motion maker and the seconder?
That's what I was trying to say, so thank you.
Everyone understands the motion? The amendment?
One question. Is there a need for a time stipulation on this? I mean, done within six months, or ninety days, or one year?
Allison, could we get your opinion on this? The question is, is whether, whether there should be a time stipulation?
That would really be up to council if you want to put a time stipulation on any further action on this. I will say that depending on how the motion proceeds, our office, the city attorney's office, would need some time to draft an agreement and enter into negotiations with Neighbor Works as far as the documents required to either exchange or.
Can we hear from Josh? What he says? If that's right?
We'll recognize Josh. Christensen?
Thank you. Our original, or not original plan, but our plans have obviously changed over time. With this, we're hoping to make it a green project. So we want to bring in and use it as a tool to teach contractors, the public, anybody out there, to educate them on the uses and what we can do with green, the green building practices. So having a time stipulation would work against what we're really ultimately looking to do is the education and then obviously homeownership and cleaning and revitalizing Lemon Avenue. But with this, we hope to, you know, use the existing structure as, as a, as a teaching tool.
Can you live with a year? Could you live with a requirement that it's done in a year?
We would like to be longer, but we could live with it.
I don't think we want it, I don't want it any longer. I think a year is reasonable.
Just in case anything were to change in, in the structure and the building of it, we'd. That'd be good.
No, I don't.
Nope, one year.
Okay, now, here's what we can do. We can vote on this amendment. Once this amendment is voted on, there's room for more amendments. So, so Jerry, you could offer a motion that time for a, a time requirement. So we're voting on, on the amendment only at this time.
If I could just interject, I was actually speaking to a timeframe on staff. I, I was aware that you were speaking to a timeframe put on Neighbor Works. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Tamara, but once we were, would have this property not in our hands anymore, we don't want to place any alienations on that property that would speak to the future. I think what, once Neighbor Works would own it and fee simple, I'm not sure what kind of a stipulation we could put on them for how long it would take them to build a structure.
Why not?
I think we could do that, but I don't know how we, what we do if, if it isn't done within that period of time. Do we bring a, an agreement, or I guess we could bring a legal action against them to, for specific performance? I.
Right now, we do not have a motion on, on time extension. We're talking only about the amendment. So if we could, if we could vote on the amendment and then we could discuss the time, is that okay, Jerry?
Yes. And, and re-read the amendment. It's the friendly that Dave put together that.
And if I could actually speak to that amendment, as Pauline and I were talking, if you would take a look at option three, it does not include the auction portion. I, I'm just trying to help you clean up and make it clear for everybody as to what exactly you're going to pass or what exactly you're proposing with your amendment. If you read option three, it doesn't include an auction option. You would need to take the last sentence out of option three and provide for the deed back through a gratuitous transfer. But I believe option three really speaks to what you were trying to accomplish, Alderman Wright. The first part of option three.
Let's go to Tamara, peer.
I was going to suggest that possibly one way to, to sort of move this forward would be, would be to, this is just the resolution of intent, so there will be some other documents that will come back, and Allison could sit down with Josh and maybe come up with a timeframe and bring that back to you so that everybody has a good idea of what's going on, and then they could bring that, that to the council, because all you're voting on right now is the resolution of intent to enter into, to enter into the agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So I mean, I think that would give everybody a time rather than trying to work it out here tonight. Maybe, Josh, would that work for you?
I, I think.
And maybe you could give a timetable for, for the council then as to kind of what you think would take for your project. Is that?
Taking off of that, I think if, if staff had direction though as to whether or not your intent is to have the structure included in what happens with Neighbor Works or excluded, staff would need direction tonight as to that component of an agreement.
Included.
You have the four.
I still have the four.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think we're really making it complicated. I think we're really making it complicated. Yes, if this is a resolution, the resolution, as Dave stated it, was that we would allow them to use the structure, the wooden structure above. The foundation would be removed and reconstructed, and all construction would be in compliance with code, correct? That's an essence of what we said. We come back with some, you're talking about a formal agreement between us, the city, and them, correct? That would come back next? Okay. And I think the only thing we'd add on is that this is to be done within a year. Can't let her hang on forever, guys, gals.
Unless, unless the motion maker of the amendment will accept the timeframe...
I won't add...
Then we would have to come back to that. So, let's come back to...
What we got?
We have one more speaker. Wait, no, okay. We're going to proceed with a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Peterson.
No.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brown.
No.
Wright.
Aye.
Laurenti.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
No.
Mason.
No.
Doyle.
No.
Sasso.
Aye.
Davis.
No.
Fails four to six.
Okay. The amendment fails. We're now back to the original motion, which is a motion for approval. Any further discussion on the motion? This is for option four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item fifty, Gary Brown.
Let me read that again. Thank you, Mayor. Number fifty is authorize mayor and finance officer to sign amendment number two to agreement number seven-one-three-seven-seven-zero with a SDDOT for the Rapid City Bike Trail Project, project number EM eight-oh-five-two-fifty-nine, PCN zero-one-zero-E. I move to approve.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bids.
First item up for bid is the 12th Street Alley Sanitary Sewer Extension Project. We received five bids on this project. Recommendation is to award the bid to RCS Construction, Inc., for a total amount of
Motion by Peterson, second by Sasso, for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-two.
Fifty-two is for the 2012 Street Light Maintenance Contract. We received two bids on this. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $45,273.30 to Conrad's Big C Signs.
Who'd approve?
Motion by Peterson, second by Brown.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three.
This is for the Liquid Road De-icer on fifty-three. We received two bids, but ZNS Dust Control's product did not meet specification, so the recommendation is to award the bid to EnviroTech Services in the amount of $12,700.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Last item is for the ice sanding material for the street division. We received just one bid on this, and the recommendation is to award the bid to Pete Lean and Sons in the amount of $15.25 per ton.
He'll move.
Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Items fifty-five through one-oh-two, can we have a motion to approve these license applications?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Davis, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item one-oh-three, this is to set the date for Vision 2012, Vision Fund Committee Meeting. This is formerly known as the 2012 Fund, and it always has been known in ordinance, and will continue to be known as the Rapid City Economic Development and Civic Improvements Fund. And it appears that the consensus date is for Monday, January twenty-three, at 6:30 PM. Do we have a motion? Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson. And this meeting, by the way, would be, as is normal practice, chaired by the city council president. This is a committee of the city council as a whole. I'm sorry?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, yep. And this is a committee of the city council as a whole, and the plan would be to hear brief presentations from each of the groups from round three, correct, Pauline? They have funds outstanding.
That is correct.
And then, public comment would then be closed, and then the council, standing as a committee, would have the opportunity to offer motions to, and then these motions would then come to legal and finance, and then back to the council. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item one-oh-four. Anything on this tonight?
No, Mayor, we have no updates this month, again.
Okay. Do we have a motion to acknowledge item one-oh-four? Motion by Doyle, second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on public hearing items one-oh-five through one-twenty. Do we have a motion to open public hearing? Motion by Mason, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have one speaker request for him, and this is on item one-eleven from Darryl Robinson, representing Dakota Soda Company. He's available for questions. Would you like to speak, or not, at this time?
Just if you have any questions.
Okay. Very good. So the public hearing will remain open at this time, and we'll move on to item one-oh-five. Can we have a motion to continue? Item one-oh-five. We have a motion by Roberts, and a second by Wright to continue one-oh-five to December nineteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can we now have a motion to close public comment for one-oh-five through one-twenty?
I'm at the same to the room.
Can we motion to close public?
Second.
We have a motion by Doyle, and a second by Sasso to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on the consent public hearing items, items one-oh-six to one-seventeen. We're going to note that item one-fifteen will be continued to the nineteenth. Does that need to be pulled off? What's that?
One-fourteen, not one-fifteen, please.
Oh, okay. Let's pull one-fourteen. Anything else?
One-seventeen.
And one-seventeen. Okay. So, let's have a motion to continue public hearing consent, with the exception of one-fourteen and one-seventeen. Motion by Doyle, second by Brown. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item one-fourteen. Jordan, can you read this for us?
Yes. Item one-fourteen is Newman Flying Service Incorporated DBA Autumn Hills Plaza Liquor at 5312 Sheridan Lake Road for a package off-sale liquor license, and I move, I yield the floor.
We have a motion to continue the nineteenth. Is that correct? Okay. I can't make motions anymore, so if we have a motion, we have a motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One-seventeen. Jordan?
Item one-seventeen is to approve resolution number twenty-eleven, Tac 143 Bravo, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property, and I move to approve with the exception of, actually, I'll yield the floor for our finance director to note again the name of the person that's paid.
I think Dave has the information. We'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would like to pull item five off of this resolution on David Mount for the amount of $272. There seems to be some confusion on this one, that I would like to, at the very least, continue it, so that we can be sure that this was on the right property and such. The homeowner has some legitimate concern that just came to our attention today, so if we could continue it, at least where we can investigate item number five. Thank you.
Okay, so, the whole, the whole...
Just to remove item five. The motion to approve, number five, which would be continued. Move to remove item five.
And approve the balance and continue item five to the next public works meeting. Okay?
Paid by Brown, second by...
That is, that is the one. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second to Gary's motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a, we have a second by Wright.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item one-eighteen. Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Number one-nineteen.
Eighteen.
Authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of curb, gutter, sidewalk, and streetlight conduit along the west side of the minor arterial street as it abuts, located south of Country Road between West Nike Road and 143rd Avenue. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One-nineteen, Gary?
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for variance to the subdivision regulations to allow plating of half of a right-of-way and to waive the requirement for curb, gutter, sidewalk, and streetlight conduit along the west side of the minor arterial street as per chapter one-six point one-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code, located south of Country Road between West Nike Road and 143rd Avenue. I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Gary Brown, second by Roberts.
Was there stiffs on that one, wonder?
With stiffs?
Yeah.
Yes, with stiffs. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item one-twenty.
Request by Brenner and Associates LLC for Deluxe LLC for vacation of right-of-way for a portion of North Cherry Street right-of-way laying adjacent to Lot One, a block sixteen. A portion of Pine Street right-of-way laying adjacent to Lot Three, a block sixteen. A portion of East New York Street right-of-way, and a portion of East Chicago Street right-of-way laying adjacent to the lots one through three, a block sixteen, of Ficus Edition, located in the southwest corner of the southeast corner, section thirty-one, basically located at eight-fifteen East New York Street. I move to deny.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Wright. Brett, my understanding is, is that your recommendation was to deny without prejudice, or you were okay with that?
Yeah, I think we're just have to do a denial.
A denial?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. The motion is for a denial. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list.
There are two additions to the bill list that was attached to the agenda. The first one is for Hills Materials Company for a change order number one final, in the amount of $3,321.06. The second addition would be for Mainline Contracting for change order number one final, in the amount of $24,288.22, bringing the total bill list to $8,53,976.19.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Roberts, second by, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can we have a motion to go into executive session? And Tamara, can you state the purpose?
Employee.
Can we have a motion?
Motion by Mason, second by Sasso.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in executive session. Opposed motion carries, can we have a motion to go into executive session? And Tamara, can you state the purpose?
Employee.
Can we have a motion? Motion by Mason, second by Sasso. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in executive session.
My bedtime, but I don't think it's gonna happen now.
You're right to the right.
Almost made it out of your own time.
Are you kidding me?
I could find nine.
Why not? Even if we'd started at seven, it'd be 9:30. What's going on with this council? Are we flipping?
We have a motion to come out of executive session.
Move.
A motion by Sasso and a second by Roberts to come out of executive session. Alderman Davis? My understanding is that the... I'll recognize Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion coming out of executive session was to move to authorize moving Dale Tech from a Step F to a Step K effective November 30, 2011, based on his continued performance of land survey duties and maintaining his land surveying certificate. I yield the floor.
Do we have a second?
I yield.
Oh, we don't, okay. We have no motion. Do we have a motion? We do not have a motion. Okay, we have a motion to that effect from right. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
For discussion, yes.
We have a second by Davis for discussion. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to see Dale get the value, the dollar increase that he deserves. But I'm uncomfortable with the direction that we're taking on this. And so what I want to do is not make an amendment or a different kind of a motion or anything, but I just want to clarify that I'm okay with the dollar value that he deserves. But I think there's an easier, simpler way to go about this rather than moving him up five steps. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Oh, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Richie. I have no problem whatsoever on the five steps, given the fact that there is such a substantial savings to the city. The five steps is less than half of what the city would pay if we had to contract this privately. This is a good deal for the city. I'm uncomfortable with it being incorporated right into his job description for a couple of reasons. Most importantly, just because I think it sends a terrible message to the rest of the 744 employees that if you go above and beyond, you're not getting an extra. On the other hand, what I think we're really seeing here is a separate job altogether that could be contracted out for twice the cost of what these five steps are. With that being said, for a point of clarity, I would... I can't offer a motion, so I will suggest that a substitute be brought up that would simply set this off as a separate job description with a dollar amount attached to it so that we understand and everybody understands the merits that we're gaining and what this dollar amount of these five steps are, and that it's very plain and clear that the certified surveyor's certificate is separate from that which he maintains as the city engineer. So if somebody wants to take that and run with it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Honey Peterson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that Dale Tech is a great and valued employee of the city, and I'm not going to be supporting this tonight, mainly because I believe fairness to the other employees that are also great and valued employees. Thank you.
Charity Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just thinking out loud here, and I mean, it's been a while since I've been in the field, but that service for $10,000, let's just say, we would not be able to contract that service and have somebody on call at the time, in the timeframe that we would need to keep Public Works or the Engineering Department moving fluidly for $10,000. We would pay a heck of a lot more than that. So to have that at our beck and call and under our fingertips, I think, is a tremendous asset to the Public Works Department overall, especially in light of the fact that we are playing major catch-up in our infrastructure projects, and we're going to be probably needing that a lot more. So just keep that in mind.
Jordan Mason?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been an interesting conversation, but I guess I also would like to...
My bedtime, but I don't think it's gonna happen now.
Let's meet it out of your own time. Take it by nine.
Why not? Even if we'd started at seven, maybe nine thirty. What's going on with this council? Are we flipping?
We have a motion to come out of executive session. A motion by Sasso and a second by Roberts to come out of executive session. Alderman Davis? My understanding is, is that the... We'll recognize Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion coming out of executive session was to move to authorize moving Dale Tech from a Step F to a Step K, effective November 30, 2011, based on his continued performance of land survey duties and maintaining his land surveying certificate. I yield the floor.
We have a second? Oh, we don't. Okay. We have no motion. Do we have a motion? Would you not have a motion? Okay, we have a motion to that effect from right. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
For discussion, yes.
We have a second by Davis for discussion. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to see Dale get the value, the dollar increase that he deserves. But I'm uncomfortable with the direction that we're taking on this. And so what I want to do is not make an amendment or a different kind of motion or anything, but I just want to clarify that I'm okay with the dollar value that he deserves. But I think there's an easier, simpler way to go about this rather than moving him up five steps. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Oh. Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Richie. I have no problem whatsoever on the five steps, given the fact that there is such a substantial savings to the city. The five steps is less than half of what the city would pay if we had to contract this privately. This is a good deal for the city. I'm uncomfortable with it being incorporated right into his job description for a couple of reasons. Most importantly, just because I think it sends a terrible message to the rest of the 744 employees that if you go above and beyond, you're not getting an extra. On the other hand, what I think we're really seeing here is a separate job altogether that could be contracted out for twice the cost of what these five steps are. With that being said, for a point of clarity, I would... I can't offer a motion, so I will suggest that a substitute be brought up that would simply set this off as a separate job description with a dollar amount attached to it so that we understand and everybody understands the merits that we're gaining and what this dollar amount of these five steps are and that it's very plain and clear that the certified surveyor's certificate is separate from that which he maintains as the city engineer. So if somebody wants to take that and run with it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that Dale Tech is a great and valued employee of the city. And I'm not going to be supporting this tonight, mainly because I believe fairness to the other employees that are also great and valued employees. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just thinking out loud here, and I mean, it's been a while since I've been in the field. But that service for $10,000, let's just say, we would not be able to contract that service and have somebody on call at the time, in the timeframe that we would need to keep Public Works or the engineering department moving fluidly for $10,000. We would pay a heck of a lot more than that. So to have that at our beck and call and under our fingertips, I think, is a tremendous asset to the Public Works Department overall, especially in light of the fact that we are playing major catch-up in our infrastructure projects and we're going to be probably needing that a lot more. So just keep that in mind.
Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been an interesting conversation, but I guess I also would like to emphasize the value of what Dale Tech is bringing to the city. I think it's important to note, if we had two different positions at just the common average wage using U.S. federal numbers from Bureau of Labor Statistics, what we'd be paying. And if you take a surveyor at $52,870 per year plus the $64,740 for a civil engineer, just to have those two positions, we'd be looking at $117,610. So we're saving money by a considerable amount here. So I think it is important to emphasize that we're actually, you know, netting a gain here versus the open market. So I just thought that that was an important point to at least note, especially for the media sources that are in the room. Thank you.
Ron Sasso.
This is something I'm still struggling with. You know, I think when we look at the, you know, one, the value that Dale Tech brings to the city is fantastic. Particularly the surveying. The other thing is that we're looking at that as a part-time. It's done on a part-time basis. But there's still tremendous value. There's cost savings. And here, I'm thinking out loud and at the same time, I know every employee in the city is valuable. And I think this... I would like to see somewhere in between. I think I've made that clear between where we're at instead of a full five steps. But and I don't want that to be devaluing what Dale does. So, thank you.
John Roberts.
I figured I better get my two cents in, too. One thing is, I think that we're paying Dale Tech what Dale Tech deserves. He gives a lot to the city. He's an extremely competent engineer, and he's going above and beyond. Plus, we're doing one thing that I think most of us here on the council said we intended to do when we took this job, and that is save the taxpayers money. And we are going to save the taxpayers quite a bit of money, so I just wanted to reemphasize that. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'll make a substitute motion to create the position of a land surveyor to be placed at grade 25.
Is that a substitute motion or an amendment to the motion on the floor?
Substitute.
A substitute?
Yes.
Okay, this is being offered as a straight-up substitute motion which replaces the original motion. And the substitute motion is to create a land surveyor position at pay grade 25? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Richie, you still have the floor.
Mayor, I'll yield the floor.
Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to propose a substitute motion that we create the position as an auxiliary position to the city engineer as the city surveyor at the same as the five steps that are proposed, the $10,000. And I'd like to maintain the floor, please.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Mason. Does everyone understand the motion? If so, we'll go back to Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dave, can you explain the motion? We have one who doesn't understand it.
Sure. Very simply, it's basically the same pay scale that the original motion. And I think we're all in agreement that we are getting a bargain from Dale Tech. What I'm... Why I want to propose this as separating the city surveyor at a fee of $10,000 a year very simply is, number one, that if Dale were to drop his certification, that portion of the job would go away and that portion of the pay would go away. Number two, it's much easier for us, I believe, to look at the jobs that are being performed in the city and to recognize that we are getting, instead of the grade 25 that Richie proposed, for instance, we're getting someone for basically $10,000 that's doing the same job, for the actual job that the city needs. And theoretically, well, if we look back at last year, it would have saved us at least $10,000. So I really think this is a great way of doing the work, as John suggested, doing the work that we all told the taxpayer we would do, and that's save them money, and provide them the best value for that, and do it in a way that we're not adding another FTE to the city's coffers. We're bringing somebody in that's already on staff, already certified, and paying them for the job that's being done. And I would highly suggest that you support the substitute motion. Thank you.
And we'll go to Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion I can support because I like the separation. I like that you're showing what we're going to be paying a person in our employment for what they, what kind of a license they have, for what kind of work that they're doing. And we've all agree that Dale's been saving us one heck of a lot of money. But this isolates and shows exactly what we're doing and giving him this raise. So I will support this motion. It stands. It clarifies it very much for me. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
Question for Jeff. In this issue, how are we going to write a job description and develop the pay grade that's going to equate to $10,000 a year as a surveyor? How on God's grinner can you do that? Unless you say it's a 20% time or 15% time. Is that what we're going to do?
Or part-time?
Yeah, I believe it would be possible. We would do it like we do a temporary position on our temporary pay matrix. We could figure it out.
But it wouldn't be temporary. It would be a formal part of the pay scale of the city, Rapid City. And it would be subject to all adjustments and raises and so forth that we vote for all of the other permanent party pay scales, correct?
Correct. But Alderman Wright, when I'm saying temporary pay matrix, what I really mean is that it's not... It wouldn't be one of the positions that would be part of our regular budgeted FTEs. It would be a separate add-on.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Everyone understands the substitute motion that's on the floor. Bonnie Peterson?
Yes, thank you. I just was referred to as a city surveyor, and I don't know if we have other job titles with that. And it's some kind of landscape. I just wanted to make sure, or if there was any confusion, if there are other employees that are city surveyors. And I just wanted to make sure there wasn't going to be any confusion on that.
The key, Bonnie, is the requirement for a land surveying certification, which would be in the job description.
Okay, well, nothing was said exactly about what kind of survey, so I just wanted some clarification on that.
Let's go back to the motion maker for clarification of intent. David, is your intent that this would be a certified land surveying position?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely. That is a job requirement for this. In fact, that was how I stated in the explanation, is that if he let his certification go, that the $10,000 would also drop off. So certification is very much a part of it. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Davis, for bringing up this motion. It's much cleaner, much simpler. And that was the original intent of my motion, but yours is much more clearer, so thank you for doing that. I'll yield the floor.
Gary Brown. Any objections to calling the question? Do we have any objections? Seeing none, we'll proceed directly to the vote. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
Roberts. Brown. Wright. Laurenti. Nordstrom. Mason. Doyle. Sasso. Davis. Peterson. Motion carries.
We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mason and a second by Peterson to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned, everyone. Thank you.